I now call to order this, uh, regular meeting of the township's planning board in 2023. The legal notice recorded in accordance with the open public meetings act has been satisfied. Consider finding sand will be exempt. Oops.
We're on.
Do I need to repeat that?
No one on the line.
You got picked up by my bike.
Okay, okay, can you join, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, uh, Sonia, can you call the roll, please?
Here.
In order.
Here.
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 Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. By.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Slate.
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago here.
Thank you. Uh, next would be, we have the minutes again, once again, expertly prepared. Thank you again. Uh, any comments, issues, corrections, additions? I'll support a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
I was not here the fifteenth.
Oh, then, okay.
I'll make it in his behalf.
I'll still second.
Still second, okay. I did read him, though.
Yes.
It was that good, you wanted to vote for him even though you weren't here. It was pros.
It's just force of habit.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Meetings are approved. Okay, um, since this, we hope we get through this pretty quickly. So there are no applications on the, uh, you know, hearings on the agenda today. There were on the schedule today, but we did have the two resolutions and the, uh, um, the ordinances to get by so that they can be acted on by the applicants and the committee and the sense of the ordinances. So I'd said we should have hold the meeting and then also we could have a continuing discussion, uh, some discussion on the master plan at the end. So that's, so we hopefully won't go too long, but we'll, so that getting these resolutions and the ordinances out if that were important enough and convenient enough to do it tonight, so we go ahead with it. So we have first of the, uh, resolutions, um, that we, uh, approved in passing. Now we need to approve the resolution. You want to fill us in on, on those? I don't know.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, hopefully they're accurate memorializations of the two, uh, matters that the board approved. Solar landscape was the minor site plan with bulk variance relief for the roof mounted solar panels on existing storage buildings as well as associated ground mounted accessory equipment at three oh seven East Hanover Avenue. Uh, that was a, there with me unanimous approval by the board. Uh, several conditions, as always, not the least of which was the solar panels shall be a minimum of six feet from the edge of the buildings. Uh, and there was an obligation of the applicant to explore with the township engineer, uh, alternative arrangements, uh, for a placement of, uh, or, or combination, placement or combination of uses for the utility poles. Uh, so if that's an accurate memorialization, uh, we have the matrix, uh, decision matrix at the back as to who is eligible to vote. And we know it's accurate because Sonia completed it. How am I doing, Sonia?
Okay, good. Any, uh, any, yes.
I have one question. Um, page nine, item three, the applicant shall supply to the township a copy of the letters going out to the residents. Just a, a question, a point of clarification. What, what does that mean? Does that go to Jim's office or Tim? Or does that get shared with the township committee? Who gets that letter?
It's a good question. Uh, I mean, it could go to the clerk or maybe it would be more appropriate to go to our board clerk.
Typically would go into our office.
Yeah.
And then we keep a copy in file.
It, it can, I would like to see a copy of that letter when it comes out. So do I request it from you?
Yes, you would.
How do I know when it comes in?
You, I think it's, I'm going to say you just requested it and he is, and Jim's on notice of that ongoing request.
I prefer to get it in writing. As a reminder, I will make a note right now.
And I will make a note to send you a note.
It could come in next week, it could come in next year. To give you an idea to the timing on that. You know, it depends on how quick they move it. I mean, typically those solar projects move pretty quick because they're after the grant money, but, uh, you know, there's nothing to say.
And I'm interested to know who they send it to also.
The distribution list, you mean?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Thomas?
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution as written. I hope you were there to.
Sonia, could you call the roll?
Here. Uh, yes, sorry.
Is it in order?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Benoit.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. By.
Yes.
And with the chair's permission, the next one was the courtesy review, as you recall, of the Marsh Town area American Little League, uh, a review of the capital project to construct the five thousand six hundred fifty square foot open air canopy structure covering the existing batting cages. And if I recall correctly, a portion of the pitching mound, uh, forty seven Woodland Avenue Argenti complex, uh, that, uh, was a, uh, unanimous approval as well as, uh, in a recommendatory fashion, uh, that it, and defining that the, uh, project was not in, and proposal was not inconsistent with the master plan and a reasonable exercise of the township's authority. And again, the matrix is on the last page.
Any questions, comments?
I have one request, which is the spelling of my last name be fixed.
Did we get that?
Is that in the matrix?
Uh, yeah, it's in the matrix.
Oh, yes.
I apologize. I know that happened once before and that.
I don't want to have to change my name.
You know, it might be.
Any other questions? Can I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the roll, Sonia.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Benoit.
Yes.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. By.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, since there are no public hearings, we could move on to other matters. Any reports from the legislative committee?
No.
Um, I do think it might be worked out to mention the, um, resolution that, uh, was passed at the last township committee meeting on the cannabis advisory board.
Uh, yeah, we're putting together a cannabis advisory board. It was passed, uh, by the TC. Uh, the application to be on the, uh, advisory board is on the township website. We are looking for five citizens in addition to, uh, the mayor, myself, uh, member of the planning board, um, five citizens, the fire, uh, the, um, police chief, town engineer. Um, I think that covers, I think it covers everybody that was going to be on the, on the committee. So, um, that committee is going to meet and, and meet as, as up to a year to decide on a recommendation whether to, uh, move forward with cannabis in, in the township, licensing, and if so, what license or licenses will the town grant? Uh, I think, I think there are six licenses that the state has. So, um, whether we go with one or more or none, that will be the recommendation of the, uh, ad hoc committee.
And that does connect with zoning, right?
Yes, it will ultimately collect with zoning. There's, there's really very limited spots in, in town that would be applicable to, um, a cannabis either retail or any other kind of licensing. So, you know, this, it would, it would require an overlay, um, where it, in, in one or two spots that it could possibly go in. So we will know more, uh, later in the year.
So this was a resolution at the last TC meeting and there was also a little, a note about it in the last, um, mess- messenger. So.
So that's been passed?
Yes.
The, the, the resolution establishing the advisory.
Right, right.
But it hasn't been stacked.
It hasn't been established yet. The, the mayor will, will chair it and there'll be representatives from the.
Part of the resolution is the planning, there will be a representative of the planning board on it?
Yes.
And is that, okay.
Yes.
So what is the mechanism for our?
The, uh, same, same mechanism. Um, we'll, we'll appoint somebody from the planning board based on the applications. If somebody wants to be, um, on the advisory, on the advisory committee, the ad hoc committee, uh, please do fill out an application.
A volunteer application.
A volunteer application.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
So right, right now, we have no, we have, um, indicated that we're not going to be selling cannabis.
We have opted out per last year.
Right.
Does the member of the planning board have to be assigned by the chair? Uh, I think basically, I think Mark, Mark will choose who, who, if there's only one application from planning board, there'll be one person. If there's more than one, then, you know, uh, Mark will decide, I believe.
Is there a time limit for applications from members of the public?
Uh, we'd like to do it within the next thirty days.
And how many members of the public other than the mayor, deputy mayor, the professionals?
Five members of the public?
Five.
That's a lot.
Does that count the member from the planning board or?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me, Kathy. I didn't say, I didn't even mention. Other things.
Okay, anything, if, nothing else?
If I may, um, I did read in the municipal messenger sent out by the mayor most recently, uh, kind of an update on what Kathy has been spearheading for some time in terms of the twenty one day notice. Do you want to just comment? That sounded pretty positive to me.
I know. Slowly but surely, it's moving along.
Right. But we now have legislative support?
You do, as far, you know, I'm, I haven't read the detail, but I, my understanding is that we now have bipartisan support in the legislature and it has, I don't know where it is exactly in the committees, but it's moving along. And, and, um, so, you know, we're the ones who started that.
Our local senator and, uh, one of our local assembly people are.
I believe so.
Signed on to help us.
Yes, that's my understanding.
I believe, I believe Senator Bucow and, and, uh, some people Dunn are on board with this.
Well, I just want to say congratulations because it was Kathy Wilson's brainchild. Originally came from her.
Yeah.
And this is a true David and Goliath kind of story, I think.
Well, it's, it's been four years now, years.
You're talking about government, so.
I know.
In other words, a blink of the night.
Yeah.
So with any luck, it'll happen.
Yeah. Well, I, I would say thank you for even putting that in the hopper for consideration because without you having done that, it would not.
Well, we had helped you through, we went through the whole process, got the resolution. It went to the league of municipalities and went through their process. And interesting there, it was unanimously passed. I, I guess there was one, there was a developer there who didn't like it, but.
Surprise.
The boards who were there liked it and, and I, I, I do not really have a sense of what's going to happen in the, in the legislature.
Well, I just, I just felt like it was, uh, at least on people's radar now for consideration. So that's good.
And we, we applied it recently ourselves. When we can, when we're sending out notifications, w- we do the twenty one day thing. I think it's great. I'm ha- I'm happy about that. Thank you.
They also do the, the four hundred feet now, right?
Yes, that's another thing. Yeah, well, that'll come up in our ordinance.
Which is not, which is not necessarily in the legislature right now. That's, that's.
That's much more contentious.
Yeah, we're the only ones so far.
When you say you're doing it, you mean.
Well, when we get to the next resident, when we get to the next ordinance, um, it'll come, we, we sent out twenty one days in advance to people four hundred feet on the Linsley, on the Linsley Drive.
Yeah.
One, right?
Yeah, but it's, that's my understanding that the town, when the township is providing the notice.
Right, right.
The township is voluntarily.
Right.
Uh, uh, extending the timeframe.
Because we're changing the zone, so it originates with us.
We can't ask applicants to do that.
Can't make them, yeah.
We can ask them, we can't make them, right?
That's right, yeah. But certainly we can, we can do it ourselves, which we do.
But the restriction on our being able to act on an application is still based upon the two hundred.
Two hundred feet and ten days.
Yes.
Ten days, right?
Yeah.
Which would be met.
Which would be what?
Which would be met since we're doing twenty five, twenty one days.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we're.
We exceed.
Yeah, we exceed.
But the two hundred feet would be the distance for board members or whoever else, for board members, I guess, to recuse themselves, not the four hundred feet.
Yeah.
Correct, on a recusal, absolutely, and, and at a minimum. It's an automatic if you're within two hundred feet.
Right.
It might be beyond and we might have a discussion, but, um, but certainly by, uh, within two hundred feet of the perimeter of the subject property or properties, you are technically by definition an interested party and, uh, that's not discretionary issue.
That doesn't jump to four hundred feet because of what we're doing.
No, 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 no.
We're an uncharted territory.
No, 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 well, I would, I would submit no, just because we're doing more doesn't mean it, it changes.
Right.
The, the, um, the perimeter for purposes of, uh, conflict of interest analysis.
Thank you.
A little more work.
Sure it is. Just know it's a really appreciated.
I know.
The next item.
The zoning map, though, I think we'll just have to figure out how, who we're going to. They will just notice all.
Can't hear you, Jim.
Maybe it's better that way.
Those stage whispers.
I know, it's, it's the night of it's going to come up under the master plan discussion, the zoning map update and zone changes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All in due time. Back to the chair.
Okay. Anything else on that? Uh, we guess we could move on to the ordinance. And then, so you want to give us a little background on these?
Oh, sure, well, this is, uh, as the board is well aware, uh, we do master plan consistency reviews, uh, pursuant to referral by the township's committee on every land development ordinance. We have two this evening. I'll refer to them in shorthand, the, uh, drive-in restaurant ordinance and the, uh, fair share housing settlement agreement ordinance, uh, implementation ordinance. Uh, and, uh, those, these are not public hearings, as the board knows, uh, but on referral between introduction of the ordinance by the governing body, which has already taken place, and second read public hearing and adoption, which has not yet taken place, we weigh in as the gatekeepers of the master plan on whether or not, in our opinion, the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. And, uh, so that is the ballywic of the gentleman to my right, Mr. Phillips, uh, to advise and for the board to make a determination with each. We do have our standard, we can do a resolution, uh, in, in one page, proof positive. We have our template resolution. It has to be single spaced to be on one page, I'll admit, but, uh, um, uh, for each, in the event that the board does find each ordinance to be not inconsistent with the master plan, we could just go right to the adoption of the resolution this evening, uh, and then refer that, it'll be, uh, that'll be the report back to the governing body. So with the chair's permission, without any further ado, at least on the drive-in, uh, restaurant ordinance eleven dash twenty-three, Mr. Phillips.
So, uh, as Mr. Warner stated, two ordinances we're considering for master plan consistency. The first, which is ordinance eleven dash twenty-three, is an amendment that would expressly allow for outdoor dining as an accessory use to a restaurant in the B eleven zone district subject to standards. The substance of the ordinance was already discussed and I think fair to say vetted by the planning board, I think at our, I, I are actually at our last, uh, meeting, so I don't think there's a need to further explain the planning rationale, uh, for that, uh, amendment. However, with regard to master plan consistency, uh, we went back, or I went back, uh, and reviewed, uh, not only the nineteen ninety-four master plan, but subsequent reexams, including the latest, latest reexam, which was from two thousand seventeen. And as you probably could imagine, the master plan documentation is pretty much silent on the issue of outdoor dining. I would say that the B eleven district classification covers sort of your commercial corridors and it's primarily intended for, uh, retail service type uses, including, uh, restaurants. And the OL five, and we discussed the logic behind that at the last meeting, is principally intended for office and, uh, hotel use. And, um, with regard to hotel, like, related shops and services are also allowed. But again, uh, if the intent, and I think this was confirmed by the planning board, is we can distinguish that in the OL five from a freestanding restaurant. We didn't want to see the office district sort of carved up into eighteen thousand square foot lots for, for restaurants. So that's the other, uh, change that's in this, uh, ordinance. I would point out that one of the master plan goals, which continues on and shows up in the two thousand seventeen reexamination document, is there's a, uh, goal for the township to sort of continually assess conditions, uh, along its commercial quarters and to determine whether any changes or modifications are needed. So I think clearly and squarely, this amendment is consistent with that goal and objective. So with all that said, I think, uh, it's reasonable to conclude that this amendment, uh, is not inconsistent with the, uh, master plan as, as discussed.
Any comments, questions?
No, I, excuse me. Go ahead. I was just going to say, when I, um, when I saw the, um, email from Sonia, the, the, um, document that came out was exactly the same as we had reviewed in our last meeting. So we had agreed, if I remember correctly, that even though there were a couple of concerns about one or more of those paragraphs, that they would be treated through our normal process as a variance, as opposed to making the change in the document itself. So, um, while that's not in front of us right now, because I didn't print it out, um, but I just wanted to make that point, that what we saw last time is what this ordinance is supporting.
Yes.
I just have one question on the, on page two, uh, the underlying part, the planning board may further require that any fixture not permanently anchored shall be removed from the outdoor dining area during times when it's closed. Can you give an example, what does that, I mean, what would be an example of that?
So, um, if, for example, the outdoor dining is just made up of, uh, tables and chairs that are affixed to the, basically the concrete or to a railing or something else, and obviously there are inclement weather conditions and so forth, and there's also the opportunity, you know, for those, uh, seats to be available for potential vandalism and things like that. If they're not affixed, the board has the discretion at the time of site plan approval to say, you got to bring them in at night when the business is closed. That's all that is. It's as simple as that.
And this goes into effect now and applications that came before, if they want to make a change, do they have to come again? I, I assume they do, right? Before the board?
The.
Go ahead.
The only, I think I know what you're going to say, but let you go. We'll do it together.
No, no, go ahead.
The, the, uh, by now, of course, you mean, uh, assuming the ordinance is adopted, once it's adopted, yes. And then applications that, uh, preceded are not going to have to come back for any change, they already have their approval. But if there is a, uh, to the extent this application or, or portions of this ordinance are, for lack of a better term, detrimental to a developer, then they can't, uh, if the application is in before the adoption of this ordinance, this ordinance cannot be used, uh, to post submission of the application, be used against the applicant, so to speak. But there is a, there is case.
However.
Clear.
Jai Cyrus.
There, there's a case that made clear that if an ordinance is adopted after an application is submitted, but the ordinance actually is beneficial to the applicant, the applicant can avail themselves of that change.
Oh, really?
So it's, uh, because the purpose, in part because the purpose of the time of submission application, which changed the old time of decision rule, uh, I'm sorry, time of submission of application will cha- change the, uh, old time of decision rule, was to prevent, uh, municipalities that, and boards that might want to adopt an ordinance midstream when an application is pending, uh, you know, to prevent what might have been an otherwise permissible.
Yeah, yeah.
Use or, 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 or component of the application. It wasn't meant to, if something happens legislatively, that happens to help an applicant, it wasn't meant to prevent the applicant from availing themselves of that.
So if there's an applicant out there who feels this benefits them, they could, what would they do?
If they want to wait.
If they wanted to add outdoor dining, they'd have to come back in.
Come back in.
And, and actually, had they already filed the, the application, they would just be able to, if this, if when this is adopted, avail themselves of the benefit of this, if it is beneficial to them.
As I recall.
That's absolutely accurate.
As I recall, the primary purpose of this was just to clarify some fuzzy areas that were in the existing ordinance. There's nothing really new there, except maybe the specific exclusion of this in B eleven zone. Be about the only thing. I, I think the other things just were reduce the, uh, amount of interpretation needed.
Well, I think there were two things. One was to, uh, address the confusion with the old, uh, uh, definition, uh, and, um, of a drive-in restaurant.
Right.
Which was confusing and, and caused the problem for one of the applicants who was looking to do outdoor seating. And secondly, as a matter of policy, we wanted to expressly permit outdoor dining subject to conditions. So we went that extra step because we wanted to do that as a matter of policy because we thought in the right location, B eleven zone, it was a good thing. Again, subject to discrete standards.
Right.
Designed to protect public health, safety, welfare.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. So given that this, uh, will no doubt make it to second read and get through the TC, um, is there an obligation on our part to notify any applicants who might have been adversely affected by the fact that we were prohibiting outdoor dining, to let them know it's changed now? They wanted to come back?
No, uh, no obligation on the part of, of the board or the township, in my opinion.
So they just, they just have to pay attention and if, and if they want to come back, they come back.
Ordinances change every day.
Okay.
And, uh, if somebody wanted to make an application once the ordinance changes, uh, or for that matter, if somebody wanted to try to squeeze one in before. And those things happen every day too, at least in my world. But, uh, so, but no obligation on the part of the board or the, or the township, uh, to notify anyone other than, uh, you know, the notice requirements within the public hearing, you know, with respect to the adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Can we have a support a motion to?
I move that we.
As part of the resolution?
I move that we approve this resolution.
And again, it finds the ord, it's the board's finding that the ordinance is not.
Resolution finding the ordinance relating to is not inconsistent. Yeah, yeah.
On the resolution.
Yes.
We're, we're doing a resolution finding the ordinance is not inconsistent.
Is there a second? Is this a voice or a roll?
Actually, it's a resolution, so a roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, it's a resolution.
Yes.
Is it in order?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Benoit.
Yes.[1766.41]
It's a quillen.
Yes.
It's a worten.
Yes.
It's a fine.
Yes.
Second ordinance, same thing, as far as how it works, not a public hearing. Paul will provide his opinion as our planner to the governing, to the government, to the board. And the board, if the board finds that this ordinance, as it did the last one, is not inconsistent with our master plan, then again, we have our one-page, single-spaced resolution for adoption.
Yeah, now, this one, we haven't seen directly here. So, you know, a little explanation would be helpful.
Some explanation.
Yes, I think.
Steve may want to kind of weigh in a little bit further after I kind of go through the, the issue of mess when consisting. I also want to provide a sort of a brief context, which I think will help the board kind of digest this. So this ordinance, which is ordinance 13-23, essentially reflects the township settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center resulting from their litigation over the Red Bulls rezoning. I'm not sure how familiar all the board members are with that litigation. I'm sure everyone is at least somewhat familiar. Steve can kind of fill you in on all the details of that. But let me go back and talk a little bit about the historical context regarding the overlay zoning, which is part and parcel of this zoning amendment. And I'll provide the history, because it was part of our original settlement, and I'll just explain what changes are proposed here. So going back to the third round, or approved third round housing plan, which is the period 1999 to 2025, we had, and if we were, basically as part of our settlement, we had a total obligation for that period of 767 units. And as you, some of you may recall, because you were around at the time, we were able to do a, get that number reduced to 400 units, which was considered our realistic development potential. We went out, we did a vacant land analysis, looking at every parcel within the township, and we negotiated that 767 unit number down to 400 in our settlement with Fair Share Housing. However, the difference, which is 367 units, is known as unmet need, and it kind of doesn't go away, but there's a kind of a different standard. You have to show some good faith as part of the settlement to show that you're at least attempting to address all or a portion of that unmet need through various mechanisms, and we chose two such mechanisms. One was an affordable housing set-aside ordinance, which essentially, which is in place, says that if the town so chooses by way of a rezoning, a use variance or redevelopment plan to allow multifamily housing, to under no obligation to do so, but if it chooses to do so, and it involves more than five total units and a density of more than six units per acre, there has to be an affordable housing set-aside.
And that's 20%?
It is.
20% for owner occupied, 15% for rental. Which are the quote-unquote presumptive set-asides for affordable housing.
The, so that's one part of trying to address a portion of the unmet need. The other was, we negotiated as part of our settlement with Fair Share Housing that we selected, I think it was a total of seven sites, most of them in the I-21 district, most of them developed with uses, to provide overlay zoning. Okay? And that overlay zoning basically was exactly what it is. The underlying zoning didn't go away. Owners are under no obligation to build affordable housing. It's just that if, for example, there's either a change in ownership or someone wants to convert the use, they would, they now have the ability in those seven overlay zones to develop multifamily housing, as long as they do the set-aside.
And I'm sorry, Paul, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, all of them are, the underlying zoning is industrial zone?
So most of them are I-21.
Most.
One of them is an office building on Linsley Drive, which is in OL-5. And there, there may be one other.
There was one other. It was Zamrock.
That's not I-21, but the, I think five of the seven are I-21. And most of them are located off Hanover Avenue, in that portion of the township, on that side of Bridgedale Avenue. So that density, which was a, which we have zone now, is overlay, is 10 units per acre for six of the seven sites with a 15% set-aside. The, the one exception is One Corey Road. And One Corey Road was one of the intervenors in our case, and they, we were able to negotiate with them as part of the settlement agree, global settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing, a slightly higher density. They were allowed to do 12 units per acre with a 15% set-aside, and they could go to as high as 15 units per acre, but then they had to provide a 20% set-aside. Okay? So six sites were at 10, and then the other site was at a slightly higher density with provision for a higher set-aside if you went to 15 units per acre. As part of this settlement, of the Red Bulls litigation with Fair Share Housing Center, we agreed to increase the allowable densities and set-asides for those six sites to mirror One Corey Road. Okay? And we also had to basically include one additional overlay site, which is basically an area of undeveloped land between the Governor Morrison and the office building, which is already in the overlay zone at the end of Linsley Drive. There's a, how big is that piece, Jim, again? Like four or five acres? Four or five acres?
Like along 287?
No, it's on Linsley. It's, it's actually fronts on Linsley. And again, it's between Governor Morrison, that office building at the end of the, of the street. And basically, we had to provide or agree to those changes in order to settle the Red Bulls litigation with Fair Share Housing Center. So essentially, the, all of the overlay sites, except for the one additional on Linsley Drive, are right now identified in our housing element and fair share plan. They're all in there but for the new one, okay? And the fair share, the housing element and fair share plan, as you well know, is part of the master plan, dealing with the housing element. And again, and in this case, is a means to address a portion of the unmet need. So if you look at it, even though the densities are changing and there's one additional site, this amendment is substantially consistent with the housing element, with the sort of technical caveat being that we're increasing the density to bring it up to the same density as One Corey Road, and we're adding one additional site. But other than that, clearly, our housing element reflects the fact that we have an unmet need, and this is basically to provide some realistic opportunity through overlay zoning to meet, again, a portion of that unmet need. So, and again, as part of the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing. So while there's these caveats, I think it's our position that this amendment is substantially consistent or not inconsistent on its face with that housing element and fair share plan. And I don't know if you want to add any of those particulars of the settlement, but.
Well, one thing I want to add or ask, in connection with the consistency part, would it also be fair to say, no pun intended, would it be fair to say that the, that the ordinance is also consistent with the promotion of affordable housing goals and objectives that are in our master plan and as carried forward in our master plan reexamination report?
Yes.
And promoting all types of housing.
That is correct. And that's also articulated in the housing element and fair share plan itself, those goals. So the answer, the short answer is yes.
So I do remember the 2018 settlement, and I remember all the people that were here. And I remember that, as I recall, there were seven overlay zones, right? Or sites.
Correct.
That were part of that settlement, but not all of them, to my memory, were 10 or above. Some of them were less. So the way I'm reading this, no?
No. Some of the inclusionary sites, where it was a straight rezoning, not an overlay zoning, were less than 10 to the acre. But all of the overlay sites were a minimum of 10 dwelling units per acre.
So, so can you say what the locations are? Like what seven, what sites are we talking about here?
So I'd have to go dig out the document, but the.
You know, I can pull the map.
Yeah, we can pull it, we can pull them.
I have the old.
You have the old maps?
Not doing me any good.
Okay.
So, so a question I have there, like we said, this is the ordinance where we sent out 21 days in advance to people 400, within 400 feet of the new zone on Linsley. But we're, we're not notifying anybody of the change in the overlays, are we?
I guess two, if I may.
Yeah, I didn't do the notice, so you take.
The first thing, we're, obviously, that's, we're not, that's not addressing the consistency.
Okay. I'm sorry, we're on the consistency.
We're only on, that's all we're on.
Okay.
Not that, I'm, I'm sure everyone wants to answer every question that's asked, but, but, but that's the only, that's the scope of the authority of the planning board receiving. And frankly, that, you know, that is.
I'm just trying to understand what it says.
The township committee would be handling, the township as a whole would be handling the notice and the adoption and the, you know, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. So who's being noticed and how? That's outside of our.
Okay.
Or at least all of us when we're, as planning board members.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
So we, we have this unmet need of 367, which is kind of magic smoke and mirrors to begin with, right? It came from Fair, Fair Share Housing. Can you tell us, with the change of the 12 units per acre or, and/or the 15 units per acre, how much closer do we get to filling that unmet need?
Not very much.
Not very much.
In fact, the, the, and I, I don't know the numbers, we can, we can look them up, and I can kind of look them up.
Right.
If we kind of go to another matter. But my recollection was that the overlay zoning didn't do very much of a dent in the total 367. I think it was actually below 100. It was probably no more than 20%. It might have been like 15%. And if you look at the, these are not big sites we're talking about.
Right, I know, I remember.
Relatively small infill sites in the I-21 district, where there's like, you know, self-storage and some older warehouse structures. And with, with the, one exception of One Corey Road, which is the one significantly sized site, the Linsley Drive office building is in there. I think that's about five acres, Jim, too, as I recall. So you're not talking about a lot, if you do the math, because you're dealing with affordable units based on either a 15%, 20%, you're only increasing the density by a couple of units per acre. So you're not making much of a dent, if that answers your question.
Well, it kind of does. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna do this because we have to do it.
Bingo.
But, but it's not really, and, and, and by the way, my opinion of three, this 367 unmet need thing is kind of like out there. I don't know where they even came up with that number.
We agree with you.
So we have to do it to settle the Red Bulls thing. That's it.
Yes. I mean, that's literally what this is about. And, you know, it was all part of a negotiation with Fair Share Housing, and you can imagine, I will not get into specifics where they kind of started.
Oh, they had, no, they had us building houses in the median of the highway. I remember that very well.
Whether or not you thought that we did, you know, reasonably well in terms of this. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
I have a question about One Corey Road. Okay, so that is a large property. There's a lot of different businesses on that property. Is that owned by one owner? So like if one person decided to change?
Kathy, and I think it still is. I'm pretty sure it still is, because we looked back about a year or so ago.
I'm pretty sure it is still.
Yeah.
That property also spans Morristown too, I think. It's township and Morristown. Part of it, part of it's in the township and part of it's in Morrison.
No, I think it's all Morrison.
Morrison Township.
Morrison Township, yeah.
Are you sure? I don't think, I don't know.
Morristown is building.
I think I'm right.
There is a little corner of Emmett Corey, that's, Emmett. I guess that's Corey there. But there is a little tiny corner of that property that the town line crosses over.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment and a question. My comment is, it was refreshing to hear Paul's explanation of the changes that are, that the township committee is putting in as part of this settlement, the very brief and coach of explanation. And I wish the room had been filled with members of the public to hear you speaking about, about what, what these changes are, because nobody understands this stuff. And I thought that was very clear, the way you laid it out. And then my question, which I don't know whether you can answer, is you laid out what the township has agreed to as part of the settlement. What has the, the other party agreed to do as part of the settlement?
Meeting for Fair Share Housing.
Right. Oh, Fair Share?
They agreed to settle the litigation.
To drop the law.
I mean.
I could talk a little bit.
Yeah. The, the, there's a global settlement agreement, that's a public document, there's a, and related documentation to it. In, in very broad strokes, the claim originally involved, I think, I forget, it was 89 acres, 87 or 89 acres?
85.
I thought it was 81.
It was in the, 81? Okay, there we go. It's just, it's like a fish story. It gets bigger every. The 81 acres, the, the claim was 12 to the acre. Basically, the math came out to a claim of 186 affordable units, which would translate to close to 1,000 units in a market, in an inclusionary development, market rate affordable housing. So that was the, that was quote-unquote the lawsuit, the claim. And, and I think it's fair to, no pun intended, fair to say the township took the position that that was more than the fair share, the township's fair share. And so the settlement involves the increase in the density of these isolated, relatively small, for the most part, overlay zones, the addition of this one overlay zone as part of the settlement to. I, I always view the unmet need as addressed by more, I use the term passive mechanisms, as opposed to the real develop, the RDP, the real development potential. You have to have actual projects with actual units, or at least ways in which you get credits, extension of affordability controls, et cetera. In addition to these two items, and these are the only two items that require affordable housing-related ordinance adoption. But there was another component of the settlement on the township's part, and that is an obligation to make a good faith, best efforts to construct a 50-unit, 100% affordable project, which means 50 units of affordable correlates to 50 units of total, because it's 100% affordable, in one or more, well, in one location, or if not, in potentially another location to be identified. Or if that cannot be accomplished despite best efforts in the next two years, roughly, then that obligation translates to a 25 in total unit increase in what would be, at that point, our fourth round RDP. So in sum, there's a potential 25-unit increase to the RDP, not in the third round. It's clear no increase in our RDP in the third round. But if this project can't come to fruition in the third round, in the fourth round, there would be a 25-unit increase in our RDP. 25 units is 25 units, 25 units is not 1,000 units, nor is it 200 affordable units, but it is 25 units. And it would only come to fruition if this project, that is reasonably expected and would be located on, basically adjacent to existing special needs housing. I think it's fair to say.
The location is in the settlement, right?
The location's in the settlement.
So it's public?
It's public. It's, if you know where the, special needs housing and, or housing and other related housing is on county-owned property near the corner of Catch Road and Rich, and West Hanover, then that is the approximate location. So might, might be conducive, an appropriate location. It's already been deemed an appropriate location.
If that, if that has worked out, that project, does that come before one of the boards? Or it's just, how does that work?
Good question. It's 100% affordable. It, it, well, there would still be site plan. Yeah, there'd still be a site plan component. Yeah. Yeah, there'd still be, would be a site plan component. Yeah. Yes, we would, we would hear that application.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? So what you're describing now with this 50 units, that's already existing in the settlement? Or is that new to this litigation regarding the Red Bulls?
It is part of, it's new. It's part of the, the new settlement.
I was unsure about that. Thank you. So it's the second component to this?
It's exactly, that's why I brought it up. In addition, cumulative, in addition to these overlay zone density increases and one additional overlay zone is this 50-unit affordable project or in the alternative, in the fourth round, the 25-unit increase in RDP. And it has no impact technically on the initial, the third round RDP, or even for that matter, the, the, the settlement agreement that we entered into in the third round, because that, this is only settling the new litigation.
So that 50 unit that has not related to this ordinance at all?
Yes.
Related to it, but it's not.
Exactly. There's no ordinance related to it, and in fact, it's still a question mark, right? It's sort of a contingent, contingency. It will occur unless it doesn't occur, which in case, it becomes a 25-unit obligation in the fourth round.
But it is not a subject of this.
Not, not related to this at all. I frankly wanted to bring it up to give you the full flavor of the, of the settlement.
It sounded like just the change of the overlay wouldn't have been enough for fair share. I, I was very surprised that.
It's a fair guess, yes. Your suspicions were certainly warranted, in my opinion, and I hope not withstand, now that everybody has the full flavor, hopefully, it was still a very reasonable settlement from the perspective of the township.
I, I think it's a great location for another 100% affordable, and 100% affordable is every unit counts towards the obligation. So it's, would be a really great thing if that can, if that will happen.
I'm curious as to how those are financed versus.
Probably low-income tax credit.
Well, they're, they're generally funded with low-income tax credits by developers who specialize in that.
And are developers who do just that kind of thing?
There, there's incentives to, you know.
They make money still.
Federal and state incentives to do so.
I wonder if the quality of the building goes down.
Oh, no, no, no. Well, I don't, the, the, well, first of all, we'll hear that application. But, but the township would not be involved in any project that would, or deal with any developer of such a project, in my opinion, that would, you know, would not produce a quality product. And there are minimum requirements for these developers and certainly the developer that is anticipated. If this comes to fruition is one that has a very good reputation in, in, in doing these types of projects.
Fair Share Housing was essentially saying that the Red Bulls should not go on the 81 acres. It should be 1,000 residential units.
So they were figuring 81 acres at, what, the math, 12 to 15 units per acre?
Roughly just 1,000 total units.
Yep. That's like 12 units an acre, 81, 900.
I think I had 186. I think I came up, but that was attorney math, so.
Well, that would be, that would be the affordable unit.
For the affordable units, times, exactly. It was 940 or something, you know. Came out.
It sounds like we should be looking for 100% affordable units rather than doing this.
You know what? If you could, if one, well, I mean, you, you get, you get credits, so I mean, there's extensions of affordability controls, which we as a township have, I don't want to get too far afield to stop me, but the, we, but, but the township has done a phenomenal job in my, again, humble opinion, in, in, in doing the right thing in, in the best way for the residents as a whole. And, and, and so we've utilized extension of affordability controls when existing affordable units come close to the 30-year range and can be converted into market rates. We have a program that incentivized the extension of those affordability controls another 30 years, which we get credit for. It's as if it were a unit. You know, we provide veteran preference housing, seniors, et cetera. There are caps. The, the formulas and require several matrices to figure, and that's where Paul comes in in particular. But, but I, certainly where you can get 100% affordable housing, certainly you're getting the most bang for everybody's buck because every unit is an affordable unit.
Any, any?
I have one other question.
Okay.
Before the second read of this ordinance, I, I would like to know the locations of the overlays just because I remember what happened in 2018.
They're in the, every site is shown and mapped in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan from, I guess, 2018, which is, was the, as last amended, I think it was December 2018, which was the basis for the settlement with Fair Share Housing. They're actually all mapped.
Yeah.
They're in that settlement, the 2018 settlement?
Look at the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. The settlement's not going to show them, I don't think it shows the mapping. We did detailed mapping. It's in there. And it's on the, it's on the township website.
On the website, the Housing Element Fair Share.
And I believe it's on the, the zoning map, the most, it's the handwritten notations of the overlay zones.
The best place to find it, Kathy, is the Housing Element Fair Share Plan.
So I think there, if I recall, you know better, but there was, there's a page and those are, those seven are highlighted. Yeah, see it pretty quick, quick and easy.
Okay.
I have an additional question, if you don't mind. So on the subject of what Fair Share Housing gave up as part of the settlement, do they still have the right to sue the township again?
No, well, no. In fact, someone, I won't mention any names because I, I want to remain humble. Ensured that among other things, there's a provision in here whereby, bear with me. The, the, well, I'll paraphrase and after which I'll find it and see how well I did. But where fair share agrees not to bring any claims, further claims with respect to our third round obligation, and also go so far as to agree not to join any third-party claims against the township if anyone else were to bring such a claim with respect to our third round obligation. So when we originally got a, I apologize, Paul, and Jim, when we originally got our final judgment of compliance and repose and assumed that final, reasonably assumed, that final meant final and repose meant repose, we wanted to make sure this time around, final meant final and repose meant repose.
At least until the summer of 2024.
Twenty, twenty-five.
July 1, 2025, welcome to the fourth round.
Unless there's anything specific to this ordinance, I'm going to suggest that we, any, any general affordable housing could go more appropriately as discussion of our master planning and master plan discussion, and let's move on, and I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Approve the resolution, saying it's not inconsistent with the master plan.
I will second that.
Mr. Alezzo?
Yes.
It's been ordered?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Quillen?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Fine?
Yes.
Tomo?
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Now, I guess we can move on to our master plan discussion. We've got the, the section, the implementation section, chapter, whatever, out of the 2017 review and the spreadsheet that came out of an earlier reexamination of the, the examination, I guess is what it was, as in, and you know, reading through it, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. I'm not quite sure when it was done and where it was left. A little background on, because most of us, I think, here weren't part of that review of the 2017 reexamination, reexamination or status review. So can you give us a little, Paul, I think?
Yeah, so this is, so I guess there are two documents that were provided. The, the one comes right out of the 2017 reexamination itself, the one saying implementation with a picture of the that's right out of the, the document, and basically what it does is for all the various categories, meaning the land use and zoning issues, circulation, I think there was open space and recreation and so forth, where there were historic preservation, where there were specific recommendations, we basically divided them into short-term, things that could be done within a year, and then medium-term, which was one to two years, and then longer-term, which was two years and beyond, presumably anywhere from two to 10 years, because that's the statutory requirement for a reexamination. And some, I think we actually entitled them ongoing, which would kind of last throughout the, the duration of the, of the 10-year master plan reexamination. And then out of that, we basically provided this separate chart, which goes into more detail with regard to the recommendations by topic, by source. It actually goes back to, goes beyond 2017 to see where the actual recommendation was made. And then provides the, a priority level and the specific topics. So I don't know how best to, and I don't know, Jim, chime in, how best you think we should kind of go through this? Through the detailed recommendation chart or the implementation? What do you think?
Well, I, you know, how deep does the, the board want to go on it? You know, I kind of put notes on each one, it's items that are completed or ongoing or how it's been addressed. And as Paul mentioned, the, you know, the 11-by-17 sheets, you know, it's kind of a deeper dive, you know, into specific items as opposed to the implementation that was in the document, you know, is a little more higher level.
Yeah, just some general questions. So the, the spreadsheet, is that more of what were the implementation, the list taken from this? Was this developed that, or this was subsequent to there where they tried to put that and put a little more meat on it?
No, I'd, I'd say it came out of the document. It was just more meat and then also take, as Paul mentioned, to look back even to the 2007 master plan, you know, pulling the particular items that were listed to be implemented.
Okay. Okay, because, yeah, most of those, I mean, many of those were carried forward, right? And the other just general question is, where's the, what does the May 15th public meeting refer to? May 15th?
During the review. That was it. That was probably a public meeting in 2017.
Adoption of.
It must have been related to the adoption of the master plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it was.
That's what I assumed.
The other thing that this did, which this doesn't, is because the 2017 went back and looked at recommendations in the prior reexamination report, you'll notice in the last column, we kind of indicate which of the goals were actually addressed.
Right.
So there's kind of no longer, we addressed it, it's no longer relevant. That's kind of in here as well. So it's, it's more meat on the bones, as Jim said. It's more comprehensive. This just focuses on kind of going forward. This kind of goes backwards and goes forward, if that makes some sense.
Well, yes.
How, how did you determine the priority level? Was that like your office or, or did that come, that didn't come out?
Was that on the planning board session?
Yeah, I think we did that with the board.
No.
Yeah. I think that's right. I think it was done after the reexamination report was adopted.
Yeah, it was definitely after, and then, you know, it was like an implementation schedule, kind of like, all right, what are we going to work on? What's most important?
I think we were working from this and then it morphed into this. And then things perhaps got a little busier than anticipated for a few years.
Well, my suggestion would be at a top level is that you can go through, because there's a lot of things in here I know have been addressed since this was put in that hasn't been put in here. It seems like there's quite a few. That it might be, if you, if you have notes on that, that might be, we can just kind of strike up those considerations.
17 sheet, we'll just do a rundown and just go down, and then if someone has a question, if they want to.
Okay, yeah.
You know, go left route.
Yeah, why don't you, since I spent more time on this one, Jim, so if you want to take the lead on this.
Yeah. You know, Paul, I tell you what, you can come up and join us now, can't you? Thank you.
I know what it's like sitting down.
Yeah, right. Especially when there's nobody else.
Yeah, there's not a single soul.
So that first item is the updated, the fair share and housing element. I mean, obviously, that's been updated a number of times. You know, we just kind of went through a lot of detail, you know, on that.
That's kind of ongoing and never-ending, right?
Yeah. That, you know, second item has been addressed, but I would say that's another thing that's kind of, you know, ongoing with open space and bike trail systems and trails and linking all that stuff together. You know, there's some other things as we get into it that there's, you know, some, a little bit deeper dive on that stuff. On the sidewalk priority program, that's something actually, you know, the Transportation Advisory Committee was formed and, you know, just recently, actually, there was a survey that we did and we have about 15 different locations and my office is putting together estimates for all those links and the Transportation Advisory Committee will be looking at that list and essentially establishing, you know, priorities. And some of those links range from, you know, I'll say Lindover by your house. It's a simple, probably the simplest one is to link that sidewalk on Harter Road, you know, in front of your house to that, there's just a missing gap.
At my house and then starts.
In through there.
Again.
On Harter Road, to other ones where it may require a full road reconstruction, you know, to put sidewalks on it. So that's, you know, an ongoing thing that the, you know, TAC has advanced. I mean, we, we're always doing sidewalk projects, but this it's kind of took a big lump of them and we're going to pick together estimates.
So I, I understand that we tried the Normandy Parkway thing and somehow the residents ended up not wanting the sidewalks.
They're there.
Oh, they're in.
It's in.
They're in and done.
They're gorgeous.
They're in over their complaints.
They're very nice. That sidewalk is very nice.
It's only on one side though, right?
Yes.
One side, and there's also connects from Columbia up to the end of the sidewalk in front of the Morris Museum.
Awesome.
There was a gap there that.
I can walk to the Arboretum.
Well, you can get up to the road.
I know. Then you got to get across the road, but.
Does it connect to the trails in the raid?
Get down there on a traction lane and you can get over to that.
Yeah, you can go pretty far.
It was a big link.
Okay.
Yeah. It doesn't go from, on Columbia from, from Honeywell to Normandy. You can't do that big circle.
No.
That would be.
There are no sidewalks along Columbia on, on there.
So that goes to the next one where it lists Madison Ave specifics for some large projects on sidewalks and, you know, Madison Avenue is one that's TAC, TAC is looking at. Normandy Parkway, it was just discussed was completed. Whippany Road near the Freling Harboretum is on the link. There's, you know, is that, what's that wood crest, the sidewalk there? Now, there's, there's sidewalk on.
Woodroof.
Woodroof, so it provides that link. That's another simple one. Getting across Whippany is another story, but. But, you know, Park Avenue, Ridgedale, East Hanover, you know, all that stuff is, is, is kind of getting looked at, you know, by TAC. Next item is the sidewalks. This is James Street was kind of in the planning stages at that James Place and sidewalks were added inside that development. South Gate Parkway, more pedestrian penalty. That's actually under design right now. We're going to be adding a sidewalk along that roadway and bike lanes. That's something we got some state aid money on and hope to, you know, get into construction on that in this fall. Link to the Arboretum from the traction line. Essentially, that happened with the Normandy project. Improved bike and pedestrian access to the train station. You know, that's kind of an ongoing thing, but I would say that that Normandy project also helped that. Improved sidewalk connectivity to Governor Morris, Twin Oaks, Morris Museum and the traction line. So that portion of it, again, was done with the Normandy project. The Governor Morris in Twin Oaks, that was something that we actually had funded and the residents over there shot that down you know, a number of years ago and that, that, that project never advanced. Installed sidewalks on Western Avenue. Nothing's really cooking with that one. Bike racks at the train station. I don't know if there's bike racks there, but I know they put bike storage lockers in. But I don't know specifically if there are, you know, racks over there.
There was another reference that there were racks, but they were, they needed to be examined or looked at, whether they were sufficient or not. I don't, I don't use it, so.
Yeah, the lockers have been there for a while, are pretty old and outdated, but no, no bike racks.
No bike racks.
No bike, bike racks.
So the next one is, talks about streetscape improvements for Speedway, Hanover and Ridgedale Avenue. We did do the streetscape improvement on Speedway Avenue. I don't know if Hanover and Ridgedale, you know, kind of lend themselves to that, a street state. I don't know if Hanover and Ridgedale, you know, kind of lend themselves to that, a street state project. I think that, you know, sidewalks are critical, you know, especially on Ridgedale Avenue. But, you know, we did advance the streetscape project on Speedway. Fire hydrant access, you know, that's kind of an ongoing thing. I mean, that's probably something that if Mike was here, I'd ask him about that. Flooding FEMA process reunion wall flood zone. So we have all new flood maps from FEMA, but they have not been formally adopted. That's been going on for a number of years. You know, talk about, you know, four years being, you know, in the works, slow to get something changed. The federal government, you know, 10 years, I think is a fast track project. I'm not sure what's.
We're still writing projects for charities.
Water, the Southeast Mars, you know, issue, kind of ongoing, I would say. Water quality planning.
Why is that one there?
The Environmental Commission felt that was something that they wanted to mention.
Why are they monitoring?
The Environmental Commission, well, you know, there's annual reports that come out. The Environmental Commission always kind of honed in on what contaminants they're finding in the wells or the testing that they do.
Wondering what they're doing.
I don't know that they're doing anything, except we do get regular reports on the water quality from the utility.
Yeah, I'd say it's not really, you know, our issue. It happened to be that one of those water quality reports came out when the Environmental Commission was looking at the mess plant stuff and that today, let's put this on the list. That's my recollection is how that came about.
So the monitoring is by the EC?
They were looking at it in particular. I think Ted Largman at the time was, you know, concerned about different contaminants that were in the water and it was an issue at the time.
I mean, I can say as a member of the public, yes, I get access to this annual report, but I don't know what to do with it. I mean, I see listed contaminants, there are contaminants in the water and I can't really interpret the report.
You can call Southeast Mars and they'll give you more detail on it.
Yeah, or alternatively for the master plan point of view, if you wanted to assign, you know, their monitoring, assign a monitoring and explanation to the EC. They do it anyways, you know, that, you know, that could be a formal.
I do remember being at an EC meeting one time where somebody from SMAC was there and they were explaining their report. And the feedback to them from the EC was, it's really hard to understand your report. So whatever, I guess it's been going on for a while.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of times that Southeast Mars has come to the EC.
For the members of the public.
If it's on camera.
At the most, we should mention that this is something that the EC follows.
The current EC doesn't do this.
I'm not sure if it even belongs to the master plan, but.
We can't control it, so.
Oh, we can.
Okay.
Next item, new emphasis on water quality planning, water should basis minimized non-point solution. I mean, the township has adopted new stormwater regs, something that's, that's happened. Next one on the next page is stormwater management must remain priority. You know, again, I'd pull back on there's new regs that have been adopted by the township related to stormwater. Mimic the states, everyone, everyone in the entire state has the same, you know, ordinance adopted that. Per the Board of Adjusted Environmental Commission, planning board review exemption for the homestead. So this goes back when there was some discussion on changing the tree removal ordinance. Maybe it was the planning board actually recommended it to the township committee to go to the level and regulate individual homes with the removal of trees. And the township committee at the time decided not to do that. Just by way of background, the, the state is trying to force all municipalities to adopt such an ordinance that would force homeowners to be regulated. You know, I think that requires a full-time person to really enforce that. And, you know, I put some language back that I think that's, you know, an overreach by the state. I don't know what's going to happen, you know, with that. But essentially, if you wanted to take a tree down on your property, you'd have to get a permit, you know, is what the state is saying should be done.
Wow.
When, when I read in the master plan about this, what it said in there, to my understanding, was that, was that the EC at the time and the planning board at the time approved whatever the ordinance was and that it went to the TC and the TC basically, they didn't vote no on it. They just didn't do anything. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was no.
They tabled it basically.
They tabled it.
And as I recall, a recommendation in there was it, I mean, it said that it had not been there. The ordinance was enacted without the, with, without the, with the homestead exemption, but didn't the recommendation was to reexamine that? Whether that should be there or not?
There was a lot of concern about property owner rights.
Oh, I know, I know, there was, but I just, I was thinking.
We have, we have a different TC now. And this, there's a lot of interest on our current environmental commission on revisiting this, as you know.
Oh, I know. You might be looking for a new engineer. You know, you're going to have to hire people. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. I mean, because you can't put an ordinance in place and not enforce it, in my view. I mean, that's, that's a serious, you know, issue. And it's, you know, they're talking about, you know, you take a tree down, homeowner has to replace a tree, you know, it's, it's complicated.
Was the, are they working off of the original from this time period or something different? No, our, our EC.
They're looking at our ordinance that's in place now and it's the same ordinance that was in place then.
Right, but there was originally it included homes, everyone, their homesteads weren't.
And the planning board worked on an updated ordinance that removed the homestead exemption. Yeah, everyone anyway.
So basically what the, the proposal at the time was the exact same tree ordinance we have now would apply to development as well as individual homes? Homeowners?
You know, essentially there were some other language changes in there. They tried to figure out a system as to how it was going to work. You know, permitting wise and that sort of stuff.
So the enforcement is the, is the key, a key consideration.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying. You'd have to add staff to even begin to tackle that. And it's probably not one person. We're talking thousands of homes and plenty of homeowners are taking trees down. My own neighborhood is a classic example, so. Unless somebody's going to, you know, be ratting out a neighbor and saying they're taking a tree down, you're not going to know about it unless you've got somebody who's in the streets all the time.
Someone ratted me out.
On multiple occasions, I might add.
Multiple occasions.
Really?
What'd you say?
Someone ratted him out.
Oh.
Well, I can't blame them.
I, I just, I will say there's ongoing interest in that.
Yeah, I know. It's a difficult subject.
It is.
That's an example to me, it sounds like we should be putting together an incentive program to plant trees, not a penalty system. You know, like I took a tree down a couple of years ago because it was literally hanging over my house. And I was afraid that a storm could.
Yeah.
It would just land. I also have no place else left on my property to plant a tree.
And there's, and there's that.
Yeah.
And there's that, yeah.
Then you can make a contribution to the.
And I would, I would do that. I would do that because I have no problem.
Well, okay, I think that's, as to the purpose of discussion, I think that's, you know, what we might want to put in master plan or before then is some, something related to this or somehow to address this.
It's an ongoing concern.
Right.
The solution is not.
Right, and maybe, you know, more specific, you know, a, you know, different wording, not necessarily the, you know, specifically addressing homestead exemption. But, you know, fostering and incentive program or somehow wording it to at least put it in there. Well, there is some in there, I mean, some more general goals for that.
I think if we talk about principles and values as a basis for the plan, master plan. Then you can look at the principles and values and the goals all as a continuum of pieces. And, and you can, you can say that the, the goal or the value is to keep trees, but we understand that we can't do it all the time. But we, we coming up with a way to, to encourage it.
To be continued.
Yes.
Next item, establish initiative for landscapers, homeowners to limit discharge pesticides, fertilizers into streams, impact water supply. You know, I don't, there was some discussion on that, but I don't think that really, you know, advanced anywhere. It was initiative by the Environmental Commission, obviously. Preservation of trees and a firm statement advocating, advocating preservation of trees generally. Need to replace trees, talking specifically, this is when the Emerald Ashmore was really getting started. Something else that came out of the Environmental Commission. And as we're just, as Ed was just mentioning, encouraging homeowners to replace trees that might be taken down for construction. I mean, that, our permits or our tree removal replacement ordinance, you know, if there's construction of a new home, that's, it's a requirement for any new development. Preserve environmental sensitive areas, watersheds, mature forests and metal lands, you know, it's, that's an ongoing thing. Include a list of endangered and threatened species. You know, that stuff's all available at the state invasive species and the dashboard, you know. This was big stuff that was talked about at the Environmental Commission at the time.
So we did end up though, with a do not plant list that came out of this activity.
Right.
So, and I don't know about the endangered and threatened species. I don't know what we would do on that, but.
Yeah, I have a question, they include the list in the master plan? That seems a little.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't know that it needs to be in the master plan.
No, I think it's really just the, you know, we're referencing the state documents, I think that's the best way to go.
Okay.
Next item township should consider, okay, that one was actually addressed. It was setting up the, was that EDAC?
Yeah, environment or economic development.
That's what that referred to, setting up EDAC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Inventory of historic structures, you know, that was done and updated more recently by the Historic Preservation Commission. Establish Ben breakfast ordinance as a historic preservation tool. So that was discussed some, but never did advance. We did look at some other ordinances and that other municipalities have used. Consider 90-day demolition delay for historic structures. You know, that was something that was discussed, but, you know, did not advance.
By the way, that, that.
I thought it did advance.
I thought it did too.
There's something similar in the state, in the MLUL.
Well, we do have them reviewing every, you know, application that comes in for historic structure. But did we adopt something that has a delay? I didn't, I didn't think we adopted something, but I don't know that a hundred percent either. That there's, there's a delay on that, but that, you know, it is reviewed. You know, and, and there may be some language in there that the permit is not issued for a period of time. Paul, do you remember if we adopted something? I guess we need to double check that.
Yeah.
There is an ordinance. I know there's the new ordinance. Yeah.
And that, and that was related to the review, I think. I don't know if we got to that level of detail, but we'll, we'll, let's double check on that one.
I don't, if there is a delay, I don't think it was 90 days.
I want to say 45.
And I'm thinking 30, but I, I, I can't remember as I sit here, we'll have to look it up.
Next one, notify historic preservation with demolition permits. You know, that has been implemented. Update various master plan maps, each element. So the initial maps were done by the county and then we started to do a new update. And the guy that we had hired actually just took a job, I don't know, it was six months ago down in Guam.
Jim, before you go on.
We have lost contact with him and we need. It's okay.
He had a rough week, I can tell you that much.
So going back to the one about the demolition permits for 50-year-plus year-old buildings. I thought that was eliminated on the 50 years and reference to just the list of what, 250 buildings?
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense. A house built in 72 deserves.
Yeah.
I think Kathy's.
That was the discussion we had, although at the time it wasn't 72.
Not 50 years, it's referencing the list.
Yeah, any, anything that's on a historic preservation list, the 50 years came out.
Yeah, and it's a list.
Planning board in conjunction with township mission, consider explore ways for inter-age coordination. I'd say that's an ongoing thing that the, you know, the township committee is always looking at and that, you know, the planning board less so, but I think the township committee more so.
That's important.
Initiate land and planning use studies, township three business areas. So we did, you know, look at that. And I would say that we also added in, you know, Madison Avenue, which is really still ongoing, correct Kathy? I don't know if you.
They're going to be presenting the results soon.
Soon? Soon?
Okay.
It keeps getting put off. I know it's coming.
Renovations to the Ginti and Suter pools, obviously that was completed township's director park recreation, working with recreation advisory committee. Deficits, you know, that was something else that was done with recreation. Open space parks update should be listed and evaluated and that, you know, was something that was completed and is ongoing. Continue to expand township open space acquisition, another one I would say that's, you know, ongoing. Continue a program of park facility improvements. Make things more ADA accessible, that's an ongoing item with recreation and open space. Address accelerated interest in recreational youth, recreational youth and adult sports. Another one I'd say that's ongoing with open space and recreation. Seek to achieve goal rendering all usable open space. You know, that's something else that's ongoing. I think you guys recently experienced some of the pushback on that with the Baker Farm. You know, we had a plan obviously to do something there and some of those neighbors weren't too happy. We had a follow-up meeting, you know, with them just to explain more. And, you know, I think they're, they're feeling a little bit better. We were talking about the sidewalk project a little more where the sidewalk was going to, their trees weren't going to come down. There's drainage and curbing going in, they're, they all sit lower than the road. They were happy, you know, hear about that. The one tree that was coming down, they didn't like, so they were happy it was coming down.
Didn't we just do a cursor review of that?
Yes, yeah, that's why I mentioned Baker.
And you're still working on it?
That's, will be going on for years. Because the sidewalk is, is complicated because we have to redo, you know, the, the whole road shifts over because of that guide rail that's in front of Wanton Brook. And, you know, there, I think they may make some compromises with some of the neighbors over there. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that, but.
But I also think it helps just in general, if they realize that, if they can be made to realize it's part of an overall effort to improve kind of, you know, this is not, you know, just, you're not picking on these neighbors because we're going to stick a sidewalk there. It's part of the, you know, there is the goal and vision of making things more, you know, accessible and, you know, to everyone.
Activity.
Well, they were good with the sidewalk when I was done. It was more the, the improvements that were going on in Baker Farm. They didn't want to see anything happen over there.
Yeah, well, that, yeah.
Something's going to happen there. I mean, we said when we're buying that, it was going to be a recreation facility.
I thought Ed's passionate statement would have put an end to the need to have. Yeah, right?
Yeah, I wasn't here, but Dave did give you kudos. He said, you know what, I think Ed kind of gave a reality check to the people on that one.
Hopefully that was recorded.
Where are we at? Open space hiking. Reevaluate open space planning with the old master plan.
Forgotten that was in there.
Ongoing.
Hey, where are we?
Sixth one down there.
Reevaluate the active open space planning, which calls for parks, you know, within a half mile radius of the place. And many parks within a quarter mile, something like that. It's an interesting concept. I don't know how close we are to that, actually. I know, I know some of the things have been, things have been done and addressed that, you know, that are in line with that, that support that. I mean, I've been trying to put parks in areas, in areas where there haven't been before to spread them around. Whether that needs to be a formal recommendation or something in there or is it?
See, this, this one is a good example of a larger vision. You know, a lot of what we're looking at here is good ideas. But I'm not sure where they came from. They either came from a complaint or they came from a safety thing or they, so someone said, you know, we should do this. This one shows a vision of where the township can be going.
Which one are you talking about?
Parks every quarter mile radius or. That to me is like part of a larger vision that says we should be, I'm just going to throw words, it's not a very good word, but open space recreation parks are a critical need for the township. So when you have that larger vision, then, and that vision is shown in the master plan, then something like this becomes a either a goal or it becomes a principle, that's probably, becomes more of a goal. So when you have all these, you have a bigger vision, you have principles that we want to live by. And I would say the MLUL is kind of a doctrine that we have to go by. When you have those things that come down, then all of these will fit into something and. And when I read here in all of these, these are good ideas, but what is the vision of doing some of these things? What is the larger vision of, um, consider making a Southgate Parkway more pedestrian and bike friendly? That's a good idea. We should do that, but how does that fit into a larger vision?
Well, it's shown, shown here in isolation, but in the master plan, it's in that section.
I think that the master plan can do a better job of.
Elevating the conversation.
Yeah. I, I mean, I agree with you because when you look at the list and even parts of the master plan itself, there's this like.
Very granular.
Yeah, in something, some.
Especially when you look at this list, I mean, you have this high level thing like, okay, this is a good overall master plan thing. But then, you know, then you, the next thing you get into the nitty gritty like, oh, we're building this.
Yes, and those are the details.
You know, so we're going from one extreme to the other.
But, but the way they report as a whole is written out, which is all, you know, that's the exact, you know, that this comes through is these are listed underneath the broader goals. As the implementation as with the broader goals. Now it could be broken out a little better for us, but it.
Or given a higher level.
The intent is there, the high level goal are, are there in each, these section. And then these are recommendations to fulfill these, um, or, you know, in line with that. It's not quite as obvious when you just look at the whole list of here, but, uh.
Well, when I was looking at the 2000 reexamination report, there was a whole section on CRC, a continuing care retirement center. And it went through pages and pages of, yeah, pages and pages of things to consider. And I'm reading this, I'm thinking, all of this thought went into one piece of property. And some of it was very specific to, to, you know, DEP requirements and things like that. A part of it was how we wanted that CRC, how we envisioned that CRC to operate. And I thought, why don't we do this for the entire master plan? Why don't we look at the entire master plan and say, this is how we want the township to operate. This is what we want it to look like. This is what we want when people come into town to see. This is how we want the pedestrian pathways to go. The larger vision, which I think was started in this 2000 reexamination report for the CRC, I think can be put into a larger picture for the 2027.
You know what it depends on though, that was like the hot topic, you know, at the time. And that's like, yes, now what's going on right now is the warehousing, you know, what's it gonna be five years from now? Who knows, you know, what the next, you know, development wave or.
Luckily we have.
I think we've learned, we've learned in the past few years that we cannot predict that. We cannot control that. We talk about wanting to have a, a bedroom community or we want to keep the character of the community the same. We want to keep things where they are. And then a developer comes in and suddenly we don't have control. So we don't have control over, over specificity, but we have control over, for example, the design standards we did. If the design standard put into a larger concept and vision of how we wanted this township to be, then all the sections of the zone can say incorporated herein is this section of the master plan which talks about vision. You know, there could be, there could be a larger, um, vision in place where we don't have to worry as much about what's coming down the pipe. Cause we didn't anticipate that. And now there's warehouses. Now there's something else. Um, if we talk about how we want things regardless of who comes in to do what, I think it will, it will help us keep what it is that we want going forward.
I think that's a good conversation for three years from now.
But this is the time to start it. Cause like I said, this is really good stuff. I mean, this belongs here and this is stuff that we need to do. But it needs, I think that if, if we're, we're all tied back to a larger vision, we would do either a better job of doing this or a better understanding of what we want for these things. So I'll leave it there for now, cause.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll, I think actually they are, just not very, maybe not well. Because there are the, how many goals are there? Six, seven? I can't remember. Right, right up front of the master plan.
Oh, the generic goals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't.
Right, but I mean, the, the, the goals are there and we can, you know, say where those, they're still relevant and should be changed. But, and then it's breaking that down into what does that mean? You know, there's like too much space. I think what you're saying is like too much space between these overarching goals and these, a lot of the specific recommendations with not a, not a lot of in between vision and explanation.
Always clear to me why we're doing certain things and why we're not doing other things. That could, that could come out of a larger vision.
So Ed, are you saying this list that was put together after the reexamination report doesn't accurately reflect the ambitions that the reexamination report was expressing?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the, the ambitions, um, would belong in the 1994, in this case, the 2027 plan. And, you know, planning has changed a lot in the last 30 years. So now we talk about higher principles and visions. We have doctrine, we have different ways of determining how we want to proceed, um, on a larger scale. We have values. What are the values? Well, FEMA values are, you know, compassion, integrity, respect and fairness. What are our values? How are we gonna put our values into a plan? And how are we gonna have that, that plan reflect those values? You know, things like that. So it's hard sitting here today to, I, I think that this is really good. But I think that if it ties into a bigger vision, we don't have to worry so much about, are we gonna, are we going to come across something that we never thought of before? What's gonna happen on Madison Avenue? What's gonna happen on Hanover, you know?
Well, I think they did on EDAC try to get into the vision for Madison Avenue.
Yeah.
And they're, they're gonna be presenting the results of the survey, the focus groups, the discussion soon.
And they're gonna need the support of the, of, of the planning board.
Yes. And, and also, I, I mean, I know what you're talking about vision. It's like your, it's like what your, your big picture of what you're striving for, right?
Yeah.
And, and there's, there's also language in here about, um, doing, paying special attention to the train station. You know, that's, that there, that's kind of an area in transition too. So I could, I could see, you know, I like, I like the idea of visioning. I like the idea of getting community input on that too.
Right, yeah. Which could be a value that we put into the master plan.
To, to, you know, just listening to that though, I, I, I wonder if we need to. I like the idea of having some vision and sort of sticking to the vision and the principles behind the vision. But I wonder if we, we also need to, um, build in enough opportunities for flexibility. For, for example, um, you know, I don't know, when the first master plan was, let's say 1990, when I moved here in 2003, there wasn't enough parking spaces at Convent. And I think the township or whomever bought and doubled it or tripled it. Now you could shoot a cannon and not hit a soul because things have changed. And my guess is you're never gonna go back to where things were. So I, you know, I, I hear you about vision, but I, I think it could be dangerous to lock in future generations of Morris Township residents, you know, let's say 30, 40 years from now into what, you know, folks 30 or 40 years prior thought was the vision and locked them into.
But just connecting with that statement, to me, one of these, it's in here somewhere. The statement about, and this to me is a vision statement of, you know, we want to take action to decrease the number of cars and increase, you know, people's ability to walk and bicycle and, 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 you know, work toward connectivity and mobility. That to me is a, a vision, right? I mean, that's, that's what you're working toward for the future.
And those are all in the master plan now?
They are.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, yeah.
And they're in here too, here and there.
Yeah, must end of the night. I'm trying to think, vision is not, vision is, is being.
I want to bring us back to the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be here for another couple hours if the.
Yeah.
No offense, I'd still think that's a good conversation for later.
We're, are we gonna try to get through all seven pages by moving faster or?
I don't know, it's up to the board. I can accelerate my version of this right now.
Not if we give all the votes to Jim.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna propose we go, you know, to like nine and stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's enough.
Can I second that?
Okay, now that'll be mine now.
Make a motion that I support the chairman.
No public and it gets very jocular.
So, so next one was emphasize the need for pathways, uh, bikeways, trails as well as indoor recreation programs sponsored by the township. So, you know, I'd say that's another ongoing thing. The indoor recreation programs that the township is really still looking for, you know, a venue or building or something to have that aspect of it. But the pathways, bikeways and trails, I think that's, you know, ongoing and ever expanding. Continue open space acquisition and protection of key land parcels. You know, that's obviously ongoing with open space and recreation. Continue to acquire open space preservation, ongoing. Complete a phased renovation and natural grass turf fields, a Ginty field. That stuff was, uh, was completed. Continue to seek off-road, on-road linkages, Morris County long distance multipurpose trails. So the, uh, some examples that they have in here is Jones Woods, Jones Pond, all that trail system went in there. That's happened, the connection to Jockey Hollow, coming up from Mount Campbell Avenue, Valley View Preserve and the trails over there happened. The only thing that really did not happen on this list is the Villa Walsh, um, you know, link essentially from the Jones Woods property over to, uh, Western Avenue. And my understanding was Villa Walsh, you know, has been concerned more with security and people wandering on the property. So, I mean, that's the only thing on that particular item that, uh, you know, has not been accomplished yet. Expand recreation offerings of active adults and seniors. I think that's expanded and it's obviously ongoing. Seek partnership with the Mars School District for improvement at Elmont Tree School, middle school, outdoor, sports fields and playgrounds. Think that's an ongoing one. I think the, uh, the school district, you know, we sometimes have a difficult time with them. But, uh, you know, we do work, work together. Uh, seek funding for Morris County Open Space Fund, Morris County Trail Fund for strategic acquisitions, that's ongoing. Ensure that all acquired open space is used for active impact with passive recreation. That's another ongoing one. Modernize neighborhood park facilities to allow opportunities for multiple simultaneous family recreation activities. Say that's ongoing. Assess the need for additional active recreation, especially soccer fields. You know, that happened. We built the Gene Tree Field, the Cornine, uh, Field and recently the, uh, the, more recently the Honeywell Field.
Cornine Field, if I recall, received an award from the, the busy planning officials.
It did? I didn't know that.
Yes. Cornine Field, the construction.
Next page, we've got upgrade park features such as tennis, basketball courts, walking paths, exercise station, ball walls, spray fountain center facilities. Uh, we just, you know, there's pickleball, the tennis courts were upgraded. There's, uh, new basketball court that's going in over at, uh, you know, Ginti, always doing new walking paths. So I'd say a lot of that's been completed and still ongoing. Undertake community visioning process with respect to open space recreation needs and the greeting of the community. You know, there's been different surveys that have gone out from different groups that, uh, we've received input on and continually try to implement that stuff.
I want to add one thing to that, um, point. I, I note that in the 2017 master plan report, they specifically delete, said you can take this out. That, that point. And the reference was made to the fact that we have an open space committee and we have a parks and recreation committee. And the idea was that we don't need a community visioning process.
And do you agree?
I do not agree. In fact, I'm the person at the public meeting in 2017 who, who brought that up. And the board did not agree at the time.
But thank you for putting it on the list. Still on the list.
It's, it's still on the list. It didn't get caught here.
Uh, acquire and proposed lands at the former Honeywell site, develop new recreation facility. Obviously that has happened and ongoing with the trail system that's around there. Um, and the new field, acquire the woodland school recreation field from the Morris School District. We're still, uh, you know, working on that. You know, I think we do maintenance and there's kind of some shared stuff over there, but I think the township's still sour about selling that to them for a dollar.
Oh my gosh. Wait, the township gave them that field for a buck?
Yeah, I think we tried to buy it back and they wanted full price.
Yeah. I can, I can pretty much tell you, I can pretty much tell you the district's not giving away any land, so.
The school district not want that one?
Oh, no, no, we use it.
They're using it, right?
Yeah, of course we are.
Yeah, we use it as shared, you know, with the school uses it and we use it.
Any capital projects coming up for the planning board to courtesy review the first time?
Stop it.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. I didn't make it to nine, did I?
I'm asked.
Focus activities improvements, including appropriate access, parking the two major multipurpose recreation areas, Street or Recreation and, uh, Sussex and Ramir, John W. Ginty. So there, you know, over the years, there have been some improvement projects. I mean, we did do some expansion and restriping across from the police station, which serves the Ginty Field, uh, parking. And then we, we're actually now just starting construction on, uh, the sidewalk project. That's gonna run sidewalk link from the Rabbinical College all the way down to Patriots Path by the Whippany River. And, uh, there's, uh, an improved drop off going in at Cornine Field, right opposite Suter Pools. There's like Loop Road, there's some ADA parking, uh, so that's.
That's big.
Stuff that's, uh, that's happening. But that's another good sidewalk link.
A quick question for you, Jim. When the master plan takes a look at some of these ideas, how do you get the neighboring town to cooperate? Is there, is there a mechanism that does that? I mean, is there some kind of a merging of their master plan with our master plan so that we can work together?
Go back. You know, I don't, I don't know if there's too much, you know, of that, that's, you know, that's probably something that goes back.
There's consideration of, of adjacent municipalities, uh, uh, master plans, correct Paul?
Correct.
In each municipality has to consider adjacent municipalities' master plans. There's noticing requirements, uh, that, you know, with respect to same. So I guess there's, it's not necessarily a, a mechanism or an enforcement mechanism, uh, but it's, uh, there's a facilitation process, I guess it's safe to say.
And I would say the county facilitates some of that stuff too, where we have discussions, you know, on a Hanover Avenue corridor where there's multiple municipalities. You know, and talking about trail links and, and that sort of stuff that's ongoing as projects are coming in. You know, I think a lot of it occurs with the mayors having a conversation, hey, we're looking at doing this project. You know, sometimes it pisses off other mayors and then projects don't happen or there's no coordination.
Well, I think like consideration between two towns, if somebody's gonna build a complex on your border.
Happens all the time.
More than them.
Yep.
How do you stop it?
You can't, you can't stop it.
You can't stop it, but I mean, you can attend hearings and express your concern and hope that listen to you.
So what do we do? Got to get her, get her rid of Home Rule? What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Get rid of Home Rule.
Good luck.
Call, you give Alan Carter a call.
Is he still around?
I don't think so. His book is.
Is it true, this is a legal question, that, that the county planning board, the county, um, they are only allowed to deal with water and roads? They're not allowed to deal with any other?
All site plans, uh, all site plan, is it all site plans or subdivisions? I'm getting confused. I have to double check. Might be all subdivisions.
Cause I've heard them say by law, we can only, but I've wondered because it seems like different counties do it differently.
No, counties deal with county road, projects on county roads and, uh, projects involving county, uh, uh, stormwater management systems and all, I think it's subdivisions. I think it's subdivisions regardless of, I think they're involved in all subdivisions. Uh, but that is to a large extent where they're, I'll say that where the planning board's jurisdiction stops, but where the planning board's jurisdiction stops with respect to, uh, uh, local board approvals.
Site plan too.
County, county. Maybe it's site plan, not subdivision. My, I'm.
Well, either, no, both.
Yeah, it's both. Oh, okay.
But like on the warehouse thing, they're, they're starting.
There you are.
On, on the, on the warehouse issue, they're starting to require cross municipal.
Different that, that's, well, there's a couple of things. We're getting off topic, I apologize, but the, the state, uh, came out with recommendations and the Highlands Council came out with the first. requirements for those municipalities that are participating within the Highlands. Uh, uh, for where they actually are regulating warehouse sightings, S I T I N G. The, uh, so that, that's the first one. That's relatively new, only a few weeks out, I think, or maybe a month now. But. No, so it, it wouldn't, those regulations wouldn't govern, govern, the Highlands regulations wouldn't govern applications in this township.
And the, and the required collaboration across municipalities only requires just, only applies to certain warehouse situations, right?
No, there's no requirement right now, other than if you're, uh, a participating municipality in the Highlands, then you're subject to the, to limitations.
I thought there was.
Highlands, uh, council has, uh, Richard Council has on, on site, on warehouse.
Warehousing?
Yes, I, I read about this somewhere.
Traffic studies and what's how intersections are affected, roadways are affected.
Who's the who? Oh, the county will, yeah. If it, so look at, at things that are within the county purview, but there's not specific warehouse regulations that currently exist but for what came out about a month ago from the Highlands Council. For, and that's only.
Maybe it's in the works, cause I definitely, I was, I was at a county planning board meeting and they were discussing this. And they were opposed to it. Because they said it was a problem.
Well, maybe at least in Somerset County, there's a series and it may be here as well. I apologize for not knowing a fan. But, but whether they're discussing, I know they're discussing the Highlands regulations that just came out. And they may be morphing that into, should we do something on a county level perhaps? And maybe that's where those discussions are. But the only regulation that currently exists with respect to warehouse sightings right now, and it's only about a month or so's vintage, is the Highland, uh, the Highlands Council's. We, sorry for the complete aside.
Yes, please continue. Secure a long-term indoor recreation facility. We just talked about that. I mean, the township's still really looking for a location to, uh, you know, have a gym and have those type of indoor activities. Seek acquisition of strategic properties adjacent to existing parklands and open space. That's an ongoing item. Conduct a community needs assessment survey for parks and recreation programs, facilities. You know, there, there have been, uh, you know, other surveys that have gone out specific to, you know, recreation needs and trails and that sort of thing. And they've received input on that stuff. Continue to make a neighbor, uh, make a neighborhood parks a focus for neighborhood recreation rather than focus on sites organized for athletics, relocation, organized programs. So that's again, something that's ongoing, always looking for, um, you know, other sites, pocket parks, that sort of stuff. Convert Cut Road Field from a grass field to synthetic turf field. I don't think that'll ever happen. Burnham Road, Lake Road improvements needed.
And now we're on traffic.
Yeah, those.
This is traffic.
So that was completed as part of the reconstruction of Burnham Road. Hanover Avenue Ridge, Ridgedale Dedicated Right Turn Lane, that was completed as part of the, uh, reconstruction when the developer improved that intersection. Hanover MLK, same thing that, uh, was improved with the development. Uh, I twenty-four between JFK and Columbia, be proactive with other municipalities regarding traffic issues, specifically the Route twenty-four. And the potential exit off that area where there are no exits. I don't see that ever happening. But we will continue.
Same thing with the flyover thing. That's gone too now.
The flyover's gone?
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a new version, you know, of that, um, you know, just pushing the intersection down a little bit further. Just on that Park Avenue in Columbia, I'm sure that's on this, that's two down from here while we're on that subject. So the county, um, county and state continue to study that. The latest proposal is to push that intersection a couple hundred feet, uh, you know, further south on Park Avenue and pick up those ramps. You know, that's the latest preferred alternative, but I think it was put into, I don't know, Kathy, maybe you know the.
I do. I remember this well.
Transportation.
We were the last holdouts and we've, we voted to support it.
Yeah, but it was that us supporting it then allowed it to move on to the next process. And I forget what it's going into, but it hopes to get, the, the county hopes to get funding in that cycle in order to, uh.
I thought it was design.
Alternatives and design. I think there's still a look at alternatives to that location and how it's configured and that sort of stuff. Not moving, not a whole new design, but you know, or a whole new location, basically kind of moving forward with.
What they committed to from my and our point of view is that they're gonna be, um, they're gonna pay great attention to the concerns of the residents in, because our residents are right there.
Yeah.
And the cut through traffic.
The potential for cut through traffic coming out of the Honeywell. You know, redevelopment and Arrowhead neighborhood, you know, we have a lot of concerns with that.
General issue. Can I back you up just to the previous one for a second? So the Hanover Avenue between Speedwell and Burnham. What is the restriping that could help that situation?
The road narrows there, so it's always a backup.
Yeah, so Mars Plains has been blocking this for, you know, twenty-five, thirty years, essentially between Speedwell Avenue and Burnham Road. Hanover next down to one lane.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, I, I think a huge improvement would be to go to four lanes at that location. The township's always kind of supported that. Mars Plains has not supported it. But basically you get the bottleneck in the morning, you know, backing up from Burnham Road, you know, up, uh, Hanover Avenue towards Police Academy. And then in the afternoon, it's from Speedwell Avenue all the way back to Lowe's, you know, essentially stand up. And it's that, that single lane bottleneck that fouls up those two intersections at Burnham and Speedwell. And it's, it's just a major choke point.
I understand the problem. I just didn't think that the township supported changing it to a four lane road in that area. But perhaps there's a bit of diversity.
It's gone back and forth on that, but the township supports it more so than Mars Plains.
The residents would lose their parking.
Yes.
Their ability to park. Yeah, that kind of thing.
So there's Mars Plains on one side, Mars Township on the other, and our residents right on Hanover are not in favor.
So it's what I thought. I just thought I was missing something. Thanks.
But the people back in, their child.
Right, our, our, we're split.
Is the end of page four?
I think the end of page four would be a good place to, uh, to, to break it here.
So it would be, um, next time we start looking at this, it would be good to go through all these circulation items. And I, I think a good number of them did have action taken.
Yes.
Good.
I went on a broader sense and this is better, Ed's kind of point is I would urge you to take a look. If you haven't, take a look at all the, the actual master plan documents and see how, you know, how these fit into the overall goals there. If they go on, I, I think they do, it's just not necessarily explicit enough and could be better. But the, especially the reexamination, the way it's laid out, I think it's quite good. But you kind of have to understand the progression from nineteen ninety-four through and through how it's changed and evolved. That, to see that and maybe though that link with the kind of overall goals and vision, as it were, um, isn't, you kind of lose that with all of the successive, uh, reexaminations, but you may have to look at it in the context. So I urge everyone to take a look at the entire documents and go through, see how that's been done if you haven't yet.
This reminds me of something I wanted to bring up, which is I'm still looking for part two of the nineteen ninety-four master plan to be on the website. I don't think it's there. Part two of the nineteen ninety-four master plan. It's like, what's there? Has anybody else found that?
I got the.
That says volume one, so that Kathy's holding something that says volume one. It's like seventy-five pages long. But volume two, which is much larger, is not on the website. I don't believe.
I will check, but I'm pretty sure it is.
And. And also there was, you guys had put up the procedures that was on the website and I went to look for it the other day and I can't find it. Yeah, where is that? I couldn't find it.
Have you looked since it got redone?
I know. I'm wondering if it got, um, I'm wondering if it got left out somehow on the redo. If you would, I thought that was great.
You still put the link on the agenda, right? So the link is still active. It just may not, it may not show up in the redesign of the procedures.
Oh, was the link in the agenda? Oh, I was, I was looking on the website, not on the agenda.
Steve is looking at it right now.
Yeah, I got it on the, yeah.
Okay, I missed it.
It's usually not as good on the phone as it is on the terminal, but, uh, yeah, right on. Yeah, land, use information slash planning and zoning board. The first thing is the click on the image, planning and zoning.
I don't know. Maybe I had a gremlin. I, I could not find it.
And then a lot of master plans.
Yeah, they're all there. Yeah.
Do you know if the ninety-four master plan is searchable?
I would not.
I don't think it, last I looked, it was not. I don't know. It was a while ago. Is it possible to put a searchable version up?
We have one person.
Oh, we do.
Yes. Are, are people allowed to participate remotely for the public comment or? No. I mean, that's even though it's not a public hearing.
Certainly for, certainly not for hearings, but. We've assumed no, that's where.
Oh, you're talking about for?
For just public comment period, right?
Oh, for public comment on the.
Yeah, just the general public commentary at the end.
Whatever the boards, uh, I, I know for land development applications, we're not doing.
Right, I know we, I know that, but I don't recall if you ever discussed it.
I don't know that we ever discussed it, but I would just put out there that I'm in favor of that, for what it's worth.
We did talk about it.
We did discuss it?
I think so.
We discussed public comment during the public hearings, which is different than the public comment that's at the end of the meeting.
I would say if they want to comment, they should be here to comment.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
I don't know. Yeah, no, that's, well, I, I don't recall a differentiation. Whether it was resolved definitively or not, I candidly don't recall myself, but I certainly don't recall a distinction being resolved.
Right.
I E, uh, uh, I'll put the, the public comment on, uh, general public comments separate apart from land development applications being different.
Right.
I don't recall any conclusion there.
I will just say at the other meetings, like the township committee meeting and the advisory meetings, it's both. People can show up in person, comment in person, or there are all the meetings are on Zoom also, and they can comment by Zoom. I get it for the public hearings. That's a different category. But to me, the public comment at the end of a meeting. I, which should, in my opinion, should be open to, um, Zoom participation.
Discretion of the board.
We have a sense of the board on which, what should we or not open up?
So I've been a big proponent of allowing public comment and, and questions throughout the process, uh, in spite of the risks. But if we don't allow it for public hearings, then I'm not sure what the value is for allowing it at the very end of the meeting when not all they can do is get on and say, hey, we, we're really annoyed at you for not allowing us to make the comment earlier in the meeting when the hearing was underway. So I, I guess I don't see a huge amount of extra value to just allowing it at the end.
I support George's comment.
Both parts, both parts are by comment?
George, I'm not gonna say anything more. I want to get myself to be any more careful than I am.
Do we have to decide this now?
No.
We will, for, for this evening, we will follow the same rules that we follow for the hearings and not allow public comment. So, and since no one's here, that I can see, we will not, people not have any public comment. And, and I don't believe we have a closed session. No.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Is, is there a meeting on the nineteenth?
Oh, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Right.
That's yet to be determined.
There is nothing on the agenda right now.
Potential that we have an application. Is anything in the works or there's nothing that's even ready to go? Nothing sitting up my.
Assuming it's something that would require notice, they'd be noticing now.
Nothing.
They're not gonna make the notice.
Should we do more master plan?
That would be the only thing on the agenda. We'd want to do that.
We could finish. It means the list.
Yeah, but, yeah.
It is a federal holiday now. It'll be the first Monday with school out.
That's true.
And it's a lot of reasons not to meet on the nineteenth.
I can think of more if needed.
You don't need to convince me.
Nineteenth, Juneteenth, which is a holiday?
Oh, yes, it is. Right.
That's a Friday.
It's a federal holiday.
We celebrate that on Friday.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm inclined not to have it next. I think tonight was a, you know, we didn't have any hearings, but we had the two resolutions and the ordinances to worry about. And the chance to talk about the master plan. I think that that's the, master plan is the only thing. And I think we could all take a break for that day. So let's, let's not have it. We're gonna cancel the nineteenth. You can notice that before and take your days off without worrying about it. Yeah, we, we have a motion. So I guess we have a motion in a second to adjourn.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone.